You know, at FCA, the MAC Avenue Plant located in the 4th District received an odor violation from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy on about September 20th. According to the violation terms, the plant has until October 11th to make corrections and to submit a written response outlining the fact. I was not aware of what was going on. We made a call to Director Dave Bell, the B-SEED, and to ask him if he was aware of what's going on. And so today, we do have B-SEED Director Dave Bell and Jermaine Ruffin from Creo to brief us about the incident and discuss what's being done to protect the citizens near the plant. So I think I do see them. If we can allow access in from Director Bell as well as Jermaine Ruffin from Creo as they are coming forward, just want to let the citizens of District 4 know that both, again, Member Ears and myself, at-large council members will be there to assist you in this transition. Also, to, at some point, council members and Mr. Whitaker, we're going to have to engage what is going to happen with the District 4 seat. We're going to have to engage that conversation sooner than later. We need to engage that conversation of my colleagues. I do not, still do not see Director Bell.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Fulton?
This is Jasmine. The, I did not see Director Bell on the other side, but I did remove Gail from the attendee so that she could address your body.
Okay, if we can, if we see Director Bell and Jermaine Ruffin from Creo, can we advance them in, please?
Council President, I'm moving Mr. Ruffin over as we speak.
Okay, do you see Director Bell?
No, Madam President. But Gail is here if the request was made to Ms. Fulton.
Hi, Gail Fulton, on behalf of the administration. In regards to Eagle, we have Ms. Crystal Gilbert Rogers.
Okay, can we give her access in, please?
She has been promoted to a panelist.
Okay, so good morning.
No, that's fine. Like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attend the meeting at 4:00. Then I'll, I'll, you know, move to the summary of your call. Just gonna keep it posted.
Okay.
Hold on a second. First one.
Okay. I heard somebody, but I wasn't expecting them, so I don't know who I heard and what I heard. So if we can move forward and if you all can introduce yourselves, please.
Well, my name is Crystal Rogers. I'm the General Manager for Environmental Affairs with B-SEED.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council President and Council Jermaine Ruffin. I'm with PDD. There is supposed to be a Scott Withington as well as a part of this call from, from B-SEED, I believe.
Scott's from the Health Department.
Oh, from the Health Department, my apologies.
If we can advance Scott in, please?
He has been promoted to panelist, Council President.
Okay, thank you, Scott Withington. Good morning to you. If you can just introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Yes, Scott Withington. I'm the Environmental Health General Manager for the Detroit Health Department.
Okay, if you, can someone just brief us on what is going on? Because I was quite surprised to receive the information, did not know what was going on, but got, received information asking for a statement or something and did not know what was going on. If you all could just briefly tell the council what is going on, please?
Sure, there have been some complaints in the area from residents that have called into Eagle Air Quality Division in regards to noxious odors. Eagle sent out their air quality inspectors on several occasions. They confirmed the odor, the odors, and a violation notice was issued to FCA Stellantis in which they have until Monday to respond to the violation that the moderate to strong odors had been observed in the neighborhood downwind of the factory on three occasions.
Okay, when were you all notified about this?
I was, I was aware of the inspections as they were happening. I did not get official notification of the violation until the day after it was issued.
Okay, I just would appreciate so that I'm not caught off guard. I'm sure my colleagues would appreciate it and CPC at least would appreciate it so that we're not caught off guard. Because I truly was caught off guard getting something from the media, asking what was going on. I knew nothing about what they were talking about. So I would appreciate from you all, if you get violations or if you get complaints or if there's an inspection, you at least let us know what's going on. We're the ones that's receiving the calls. We're also receiving emails from the constituents. I do live in this neighborhood as well. I am presently reside in District 4. So I would like to at least know what's going on. Member Ears, this is also an at-large council member that is also servicing District 4. We all were council members, active in, in passing the resolutions that have come before us and know I was active going out with presentations of FCA when they were trying to do what they were doing. So if you could just let us know what's going on when you get those complaints, I would truly appreciate it because I don't like to be caught off guard right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Ruffin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Withington?
Yeah, just to say that we, we will know more when the company responds to Eagle. But a lot of these chemicals do have an odor threshold that's well below the level they can be detected by other instruments.
Thank you. Member McCallister Jr., I see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to either Mr. Withington or someone, has there been any temporary assessment as to where this is originating from and what is being done to rectify? I know it's in the still early stages, but has there been any advice to any of you as to where this has originated from? And this, this is to either Mr. Withington or to whoever can answer that question.
So I did talk to the inspector from Eagle. He has hypotheses that he is expecting the response from Eagle will clarify. But I think until the response from Stellantis comes, they will not be able to make any formal conclusions.
Okay, thank, through the chair, thank you for that. And Mr. With, Mr. With, also, what measures are being taken? And I know, again, this is early, but what measures are being taken to rectify with this odor or whatever it is is being conducted now? Have they, have they had any information on the assessment on that, sir?
I believe once the response from Stellantis comes in on Monday through the chair, the, that will clarify because that will include the company's own analysis as to the source.
Okay, and with-
And control measures, sorry, I apologize, that they can take.
Yes, sir. With that, I know that a number of times that the state comes down and give violations, and it's always my concern as with violations, if there is a financial involvement with that, those dollars go to the state. But, and I know this is still early, but I would like to know what are they going to do to assess the surrounding communities regarding this smell, whether it's contaminated or anything like that or has, went into homes causing anything to people's respiratory or health systems and things of that nature? So again, I know this is early, but I would like to definitely see what their, what their resolution is as far as assisting those surrounding communities, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Let me just ask, how do you all plan to report back to council after the Monday response from Stellantis? Everybody don't answer me at one time.
Through the chair, Council President Jones, the way that I understand is, once we have the report, that report from Stellantis, it goes to Eagle and Eagle will formally respond to that. And once we have that information, we can share that with council that will either come through, through PDD, through our office, but more than likely through our partners over in the Health Department and/or Creo.
Okay.
So when we-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
When, when the response is received from Eagle, we will evaluate the response at B-SEED and consult with our partners in the Air Quality Division. And if we don't feel the response is adequate, we will weigh in on the response with the Air Quality Division. And we can share that information with city council.
Okay, I'd like to have the information that you receive back from Eagle. When you receive it, if you can share that information, we will be hearing, hopefully, from, they were not available to come to this meeting. Stellantis will be hearing from them, hopefully, at the next meeting or after their response is turned in. I'm looking forward to hearing from them. Let me ask, has the community been engaged? And how has the community been engaged? If they have, and if they haven't, why not?
I've spoken with several community members who've called my, my office with complaints. And I've talked with them to understand their complaints and try and determine if there was a pattern to the odors or if it was random. And I've also then conversed with the Air Quality Inspector to see what they were doing to investigate the complaints.
There was a NAC committee set, put on board dealing with FCA when FCA actually started their project. Have you talked to any of the NAC committee members?
Yes, ma'am. Council, Council President, we have had conversations with the NAC, the FCA NAC. We've actually, we held a meeting with them, I want to say about four weeks ago or so, where we gave them an update along with Creo about any violations that existed at that time. This was not a full violation during that discussion, but they are fully aware of what's going on, what the issue is. As some of those, those same folks were the ones who kind of raised this as an issue. And we instructed them to contact Eagle, who oversees this particular process. And so they'll be following and tracking and we'll be sharing that information with them when we see that response as well.
Okay, you said you've had conversation with some of the NAC. Have you talked to the NAC chair?
The, this particular NAC does not have a NAC chair, but we do have, we have had conversation with the full NAC, yes.
The FCA does not have a NAC chair?
The, the FCA, this FCA NAC does not officially have a chair, but we do have one, somebody who has been acting in that capacity, which is Jerry King, and he has been involved in the conversation.
All right, I do see a couple of hands up. I still have a lot of questions. I'm sure you will still be getting questions from our office because like I said, I was caught completely, we were caught completely off guard when we received that call. And I, and it's just unfortunate that the communication is not flowing the way it should be flowing because we're going to get more calls than you all get automatically because the community knows how to get in contact with us and the media knows how to get in contact with us. And so we were getting calls on Sunday morning. I was trying to worship and I started getting calls from the media. My staff started getting calls from the media, emails from the media, and we know absolutely nothing. And that's just very unfortunate. Member Benson?
Madam President, just want to say thank you for bringing this to our attention today. And just remind everyone, during the CDO conversations, a point of contention for the community was the future air quality as a direct result of the expansion of the plant and the paint center being located so near to residential. So just wanted to say thank you for bringing that up today. But Mr. Withington, you made a statement regarding odors, their detectability and the threshold where it becomes dangerous. And I remember there being a huge sign over I-94 near the Great Lakes and Energy Plant that said you can smell it. It's air pollution. So then I want to know if there's a, is there a connection between being able to smell something and it exceeding the air quality standards set by the federal or state government? And if so, should there be a concern here that you can smell paint fumes in the neighborhood? Yes, there is a concern. Leave aside whether it has health effects. It certainly has the impact on your quality of life, even if it's below a level that's been identified to have health effect, direct health effects. Eagle, of course, under state law, has the jurisdiction over air pollution. And of course, air pollution doesn't respect geographic, political or city or county borders. So that's the reason why that's assigned at the state level. But I did inquire for, for Eagle to put together the components that are used in the VOC components that are in the emissions from the, from the plant and identify the health standards for those components. Okay, and so is this still a good rule of thumb that if you can smell it, it's air pollution? It's a good rule of thumb because, of course, if you can smell it, even if it's below a level that would cause during detectable or recognize health effects, it certainly affects your quality of life. I'm sure your property values and people know that you can smell paint fumes on a regular basis in the neighborhood. And then is it, are there signs or is there any other type of literature so that the residents in the immediate area know whom to call when they have an issue of this nature? And maybe it's not just the smell of these fumes or some other issue that may be happening as a direct result of the plant? I have not seen any in the area, but I would assume, but that might be something that the company could identify where they could call to complain to the company. Okay, I mean, there is a great wall there along the border of the plant in the neighborhood. So that would be, to me, an easy way to identify how and whom to call if there are issues. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Has the law department been involved in this? Okay, Ms. Fulton-
Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge.
Ms. Fulton, can you make sure the law department gets involved in this situation, please? Well, I see Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Kennedy, were you made aware or has the law department, to your knowledge, been made aware of this situation?
Good morning, Chris, the law department. I have not been made aware of the situation. I will communicate with corporations to inform them and find out if he is aware of this. If you understand me, I'm sorry, I haven't learned that.
Okay, you're not coming through real good. You're coming through kind of fuzzy, Ms. Kennedy. Your computer's coming through kind of fuzzy and I know it's just internet sometimes. I, I think it's a problem that we don't make, the law department, it's like you don't make council aware of what's going on. I, I think we have to do a better job of communicating to people that need to know what's going on, on what's going on. And I know, Mr. Ruffin, you said that there was not a NAC chair. And if I'm not mistaken, for the project that we talked about, the member that I put on, which was Jerry King, was the elected chair for the NAC. And I don't know if you knew that, if you, yeah, I think you said you've been in contact with him, but he was elected the chair for NAC, so.
Madam President, you're absolutely correct. I wanted to correct the record on that. He is, he was the chair.
Thank you. Council member Castaneda Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for making this a discussion today in session. I also want to thank Senator Chang, who does keep us up to date about any air quality issues, regardless of where they pop up because they do impact air quality as a whole in the city. And so my question is, I think oftentimes when these issues pop, we defer to Eagle, but there's a lot we can be doing locally. So my question is, what are we doing as it relates to air monitoring? I know I heard B-SEED talk about the air quality specialist that's on staff going out. And I think I saw an update that the FCA site is installing their own air monitoring system. What are we doing in terms of regular, ongoing air quality monitoring in the surrounding area? A fugitive dust ordinance was passed and the air quality specialist was hired and equipment was purchased specifically for these types of situations. So I would like to know, what is the regular, ongoing monitoring of these heavier industrial sites where we know there's an increase in emission is one question. The other question is, as it relates to the community benefits in the home repairs program? We know, we knew then and we know now based on our experience with the Gordy Howe Bridge and the Delraye Community that chronically has these smell issues, that money put for the home repair program was insufficient because it didn't really support folks being able to get their HVAC system and windows retrofitted to help mitigate some of these smells and toxins coming into their homes. So what is the administration's plan, given this most recent violation, to add additional support to that repair program so folks truly can be protected as it relates to public health and air quality as a whole? And then the other question is, as it relates to, this is something I think at the state level. With Marathon, we pushed as a council to get them to do a SEP, a Supplemental Environmental Plan, versus just paying the penalty and fines at the state level. And I will be making a motion to request LPD to draft that resolution because I think just how we held Marathon accountable, we should be doing the same thing here. It's great, you know, if FCA pays the fine, but again, like Member McCallister said, it goes to the state. I think we need to be pushing them to do an SEP or urging them through resolution so that the SEP, the Supplemental Environmental Program, is directly inverted back into that host community to mitigate the negative impacts of the smells and whatever else is being released into the air. So just stating that, but I'll make the motion when I'm done with my comments. If someone could answer those two questions of, what's the regular, ongoing air monitoring and/or health assessments that done, that are done for the host community? And two, what, what are the plans to address the need for home repairs to address the smells and pollution in the area given that the previous community benefits program is insufficient and doesn't support adequate HVAC and window retrofication?
So I can address parts of those questions. In terms of the ongoing air monitoring for the area, we do monitor fugitive dust as part of our bulk solids management program. We do not monitor overall air quality. That is something that is monitored via the state through the Air Quality Division of Eagle. And the permit to install that the Stellantis plant has, they do monitor their equipment to make sure that it is within the parameters. But in terms of just, is there monitors every so many feet or every so many miles within the city to see, you know, monitor different parameters of air quality? We are not in a position to do that. And as far as I completely agree with the Supplemental Environmental Plan, we had just been in talks here in our own division about bringing, highlighting that as a way to get some more environmental benefits within the city instead of paying a fine. It's, it's an excellent opportunity, you know, instead of just paying a fine, to get some good works to come out of something that happened. So we will also be pushing that same plan.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. I'll say, follow-up is, my understanding is the equipment can measure more than just fugitive dust. I could be wrong. But I think as a city, and a city that continues to attract industry as well as has a history of being an industrial city, certain neighbors bearing the burden of the concentration of these industries that we ourselves need to look at what is our plan around air monitoring? And then the Health Department around conducting periodically health impact assessments within these frontline communities to measure the impact of this industrialization in these neighborhoods. So putting that out there as a push, as an urge to the administration to work towards developing an air quality. And there's, I mean, communities do it all the time. Partner with University of Michigan, partner with local health experts to do it to supplement what comes from Eagles, but not just left in the dark until there's a violation. So just, I think, putting that out there for food for thought. I'm not sure who can speak to the home repair piece and what's being done to, to look at it, to be able to address the need for HVAC and window retrofitting to address some of the smells and such that we're seeing in the area.
Through the chair to, to Member Castaneda Lopez. In regards to the home repair program, we are actually in a second phase of that program, so it's currently still active. And what we are doing is that we're, we're waiting for the response from Stellantis and Eagle to see if there are any mitigating factors and see what Stellantis' plan is to move forward. And as far as additional monies for home repair, that's not a conversation that we've begun as of yet because we're still administering the one that we have right now. But that's a conversation that I think, once we hear back, that's something that we could have internally.
Got it, thank you. Yeah, and I would just say, I mean, I'm glad that the current program's rolling out, but in general, because I'm not going to be in council forever, is any industrial project, you should be the basic checkmarks, right? If we know, and the argument made during the FCA deal, which I did not support, was that they were going to reduce emissions. Where they reduced emissions was in Warren, which is a majority white community which has half the rates of asthma and half the rates of environmental justice issues as this neighborhood on the east side. And the VOC emissions were increasing by tons. I don't remember the exact amount, but by tons in the host community. And so I'm not surprised. I don't anticipate this being the only violation, but we can be proactive and prepare more, recognizing that this most likely will occur unless they somehow figure out how to increase emissions at this particular site by investing in additional retrofitting of homes in the nearby space, by investing in additional buffering, by investing in ongoing monitoring and ongoing health impact assessments so that we are doing what we can as a municipality to protect those frontline communities. And I can't say that enough because it's a chronic issue we face as an industrial city and it, it shouldn't be a fight for community after community to negotiate these things. And so, Madam Chair, I want to, in closing, just make a motion, move to request that LPD draft a resolution urging FCA to enter into a supplemental, to do a Supplemental Environmental Program in response to this violation versus payment of fees. So, Madam Chair.
Motion has been made. Any discussion on that motion? Any objection to the motion? Motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we'll submit the, send the, the language to LPD. It's basically the same what we did for Marathon, but modifying it slightly for this, for this incident specifically. Thank you.
Okay, I thought I said another hand up. Did, Mr. Ruffin? I'm sorry, Member McCallister. I knew I did see a hand. Member McCallister?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, I did have my hand raised. And, well, since I have a floor now, through you to Ms. Rogers. Ms. Rogers, one of the concerns is, and I think this is something that, I don't know if your office or Mr. Ruffin's office or B-SEED, whoever, is working with the state because the concern that I have is that what Member McCallister stated, you know, a lot of this stuff happens in her district and because of the industrial, high industrial. But my concern is, you know, when binding is coming down, binding is, the fines go to the state. And therefore, you know, the state says, okay, it goes in our coffers. But what is happening and what is being done for the people within- But what is happening and what is being done for the people within our communities that have been affected by these whatever? And so that is my concern. And I know you, the reason why I raised my hand because you did address, you know, how things would be worked out, you know, as far as putting other implementations into the programs. But again, you know, it's still, my concern is, why if something is happening within our communities and they're being fined, those fines are not directed to assist and support those communities who have been affected? And I just, I really want to emphasize that because that's when initially came out, what happened with Marathon, I just could not understand that and that those fines should be allocated back to the communities as opposed to just going to the state conference. So that's just something I wanted to state when you made that statement, ma'am.
Through the chair, I completely agree. And I think we do have some plans in-house to kind of push these supplemental environmental projects with the state so that when people are fined, that in fact they say, hey, you can pay this fine or you can do these projects here. And a lot of the times, I think maybe that the the industry people don't, they aren't aware that this is an option because this is a viable option and it looks good for everybody. It's, as far as I'm concerned, it's a win-win, you know, after a big loss. So you've been fined. And I wanted to also stop and pause right now and say that, you know, Stellantis has not been found in violation as of yet. You know, they do have an opportunity to respond and based on their response, they may or may not, you know, actually receive a violation. But once, you know, a fine has been issued, you have the opportunity to do a supplemental environmental project that can be a big boon for the neighborhood around your area, which would in fact be a big boon for the, you know, for the plant or whatever kind of industrial partner it is. So yes, I think this is something that should be pushed at both the state level and with the industry partners here in the city.
Through the chair, thanks for that, Ms. Rogers. And I understand, but I just wanted to make sure that our communities are taken care of if they have been subjected or violated in any ways, whether it be through supplemented planning or through finding. So I appreciate that, that you're moving forward with that. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. In southwest Detroit, is there an audible tone that rings around the Marathon area when there is an odor breach to the neighborhood? Ms. Rogers, Mr. Ruffin?
Madam President?
Member McCallister?
I know that the the Homeland Security, ma'am, they are normally the ones that are responsible for that when there's any type of signal that should be coming out. Because I know before it came out and they they had to address it then, ma'am. So I don't know if we need to have them on here for that question, Madam President.
Okay, I just, you know, think that the community needs to know when there is an odor breach. People wonder what they're smelling, if they should come out of their homes or what's going on. And I think that the community needs to be made aware if there is some type of odor breach in the community. I know, let me just say this, I'm just, I guess, just a little taken back with the information that we received from the administration. I know when they were trying to get the FCA project approved, they were calling everybody left, right and sideways. And now that there's a concern over in that neighborhood, nobody seems to give us heads up or give me at least heads up. Sometimes I get so many calls from the media to I wonder, am I responsible for what's going on? Because I'm getting all of the calls and don't know what's going on. And I think that's ridiculous. That adds to a stress level that you all don't have to deal with, that I have to deal with, which is unfortunate. I mean, even if you don't want to talk to me, okay, cool, send me a text or send me, send me something. I'm not going to be looking at an email normally on a Sunday morning, but send me a text and let me know what's going on. I mean, when you guys want something, I'm getting texts all the time. But to let me know what's going on so that I'm not caught in the blind side, I would just appreciate it. I just think it's courtesy. You would appreciate knowing what's going on if someone is dialing your number all the time trying to get some information. Member Castaneda Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted actually to do an additional resolution urging the administration to develop a comprehensive air quality monitoring plan, so it's not just defaulting at Eagle or almost corporations, as well as ongoing health impact studies or assessments. We'll get the language to LPD so that this is something that is pushed forward rather than just an idea that's out there. Because this is not the first time we're having a conversation. You mentioned Delray and southwest Detroit, it's a chronic issue. And, you know, the issue that's currently going on in Delray still has yet to be resolved. And the community has only received one meeting with Director Barry and that's it. And that's just insufficient. And so I would make a motion and I'll follow up with LPD. So, Madam Chair, to urge the administration to develop a comprehensive air quality monitoring plan as well as health monitoring plan as it relates to these frontline communities that deal with industry. So, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion has been made. Any discussion on the motion? Any objections to the motion? Motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, anything else from my colleagues on this matter? Anything else from CPC or the Let's Lay the Policy Division on this matter? Here and seeing nothing further, thank you all for coming at the request. And we look forward to getting additional information on what the results are and the findings are. Again, thank you. Okay, that will conclude this discussion. And we are going to move back to the to the agenda for the formal session. The agenda of the section of Tuesday, September 21st, 2021 will be approved. There being no reconsiderations or unfinished business, we will proceed to the Internal Operations Standing Committee for the end.